Could I have your attention, please? I'd like to call Ms. Nicole Dillon-Coford to the podium to lead the board in prayer. Amber. Oh, I'm sorry. I got your second name. Amber Nicole Dillon-Cofford.
Good evening, everyone.
Please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet today and getting everyone here safely. We pray for a productive meeting and the wisdom to make the right decisions for the safety of our students, teachers, and faculty members while providing this high-level education despite the pandemic. We also pray that the number of COVID-19 cases continue to decrease and for all of the victims of the virus and their families. Give all of the students, specifically seniors and those missing out on sports and extracurricular activities, the strength to persevere. Lastly, we pray for the continued protection of everyone during these trying times. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amber, would you please stay there? There's something I would like to read for the members of the board and the audience. Do the pledge now? Mr. Robichaud, do the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'll get back on track. I'd like to introduce Nicole. She's a 12th grader at Destraiant High School. She's a member of the Beta Club, the Interact Club. She's a Wildcat mentor, an FCS officer. She's a Destin Darling in her fourth year. She's a studio competitive dancer, a national competitive West Coast swing dancer.
Correct.
I'm sure a lot of us could use that. She organized a toy drive for the last five years and has collected over a thousand toys for children in the neighborhood. She's been on the honor roll all four years of high school. So we'd like to congratulate Amber for all that you do, not only for yourself, but for the kids of this school system and the things that you do. So we wish you the best of luck this year. It's a little bit different than it was last year, for sure, but we'll make it better for you, okay? So thank you very much for leading us in prayer tonight.
Thank y'all.
I'd like to call a board meeting to order. Let the record show that all board members are present except past president, Mr. Dennis Nocken. The first item on the agenda is a resolution in memory of Ms. Wanda Blue, and I'd like to ask Mr. Jay Robichaud to please read that resolution.
My pleasure, Mr. President. Resolution in memory of Ms. Wanda Blue. Whereas Ms. Wanda Blue served as a custodian for 33 years in the St. Charles Parish public school system, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Ms. Wanda Blue its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the August 19, 2020 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Blue's family. I so move approval.
It's been moved by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mrs. Bernard, that we accept this resolution in memory of Ms. Wanda Blue. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. Item 2.02 is a resolution in memory of Robert Smith, and I'd like to ask Mr. Oakland to please read that resolution.
To be an honor, Mr. President, Mr. Smith was not only a law bus driver for many years in the parish, but was also a friend of mine. Resolution in memory of Mr. Robert Smith. Whereas Mr. Robert Smith served as a school bus operator for 35 years in the St. Charles Parish school system, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mr. Robert Smith its sincere sympathy in this time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the August 19, 2020 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Smith's family. I so move.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Oakland and seconded by Mr. Robichaud that we accept this resolution. Is anyone from the Smith family here tonight? No? Okay. So all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. The next item, 2.03, is a resolution in memory of Kendall Pierre, and I'd like to ask Mr. John Smith to please read that resolution.
I'm honored to read this resolution on behalf of the deceased Reverend Kendall Pierre. I knew Mr. Pierre, Reverend Pierre, very well. Worked on a number of committees with him, and I'm honored to read this resolution. Whereas Reverend Kendall Pierre served as an assistant basketball coach for five and a half years in the St. Charles Parish public school system, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Reverend Kendall Pierre its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the August 19, 2020 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the Reverend Pierre's family. I so move for its adoption.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Robichaud, that we accept this resolution in memory of Reverend Kendall Pierre. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. The next resolution is in memory of Mr. Greta Colly, and I'd like to ask Mr. Alexander, please read that resolution.
It'd be my honor, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Ms. Greta Colly served as an art teacher for 32 and a half years in the St. Charles Parish public school system, and be it resolved that St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Greta Colly its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the August 19, 2020 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mrs. Colly's family in our move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mrs. Bernard, that we accept this resolution. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. I know we have a member of Ms. Colly's family. Vanessa, would you please come forward, huh? The next agenda item is 2.05, a resolution in memory of Ms. Lorraine Delk. I'd like to call Ms. Bernard to make a motion to table till the next board meeting.
Yes, it's my honor. I would like to make a motion to move Resolution 2.05 from this August meeting to September when her family members would very much like to be present.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Smith, that we table this resolution until the September board meeting. All board members, please cash your vote. Since we have a little technical difficulty, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed? If there being none, that motion carries. Thank you. Now we get to the business portion of our meeting. 3.01 are the minutes of the July 13, 2020 committee meetings and the July 15, 2020 regular board meeting.
Over. Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Oakland, seconded by Mr. Robichaud, that we accept the minutes of the July 13, 2020 committee meetings and July 15, 2020 regular board meeting. Any discussion? If there being none, please cash your vote. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 3.02, flood insurance. The school board has purchased flood insurance on a district-owned building since 2007 as required by FEMA in order to qualify for reimbursement in the event of a declared disaster. As part of the National Flood Insurance Program, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is covered by Wright Insurance Policies with 72 of them renewing in September. The upcoming renewal premiums and policy schedule were reviewed at the Director of Risk Management and Benefits. The remaining policies will be reviewed as they become due. The district's property insurance policy also provides $10 million in excess flood and storm damage coverage. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, and is aligned with Goal C of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Over. Approval at a cost of $247,568.
Second. We have a motion to approve the agenda item by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Oakland. Okay. And the cost is $247,568. Any discussion? If there being none, please cash your vote. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 3.03, job description revisions.
Item 3.03, the job description revisions. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the board. Several revisions are being recommended for the 2020-2021 school year. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, and is aligned with Goal B of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Suffering, that we approve the job description revisions. Any discussion? Superintendent? Okay, we have no discussion from staff. So please cash your vote. And that motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 3.04, personnel items. I gotta scroll up now. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, is aligned with Goal B of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Oakland, that we approve the Personnel and Policy Committee items as presented to the board on Monday, August 17. Any discussion? If there be no discussion, please cash your vote. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 3.05, the 2020-2021 Pupil Progression Plan. RS 17:24G requires each local education agency in Louisiana to prepare and submit annual revisions to the pupil progression plan, incorporating any changes required by state and local demands. Board approval is required before submitting the document to BSE. This agenda item was presented at the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, and aligns with Goal A of the board's Strategic Plan.
I move approval of the 2020-2021 Pupil Progression Plan.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Bernard that we approve the 2020-2021 Pupil Progression Plan, seconded by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cash your vote. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 3.06, the ratification of substantial completion of Ethel Scheffner Elementary School HVAC replacement. The HVAC replacement project at Ethel Scheffner Elementary School is ready for ratification of acceptance as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Thursday, July 30, 2020, with punch list items remaining. The engineer recommends acceptance. Acceptance of the ratification of the HVAC replacement project at the Ethel Scheffner Elementary School as substantially complete will allow the contractor to proceed all closeout documents. This recommendation was discussed with the board president, board vice president, and Captain Improvement's chairperson. This agenda item was reviewed at the Captain Improvements Committee meeting on Monday, August 17, 2020, and aligns with Goal D of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we accept ratification of substantial completion of HVAC replacement at Ethel Scheffner Elementary School.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Suffering, seconded by Mr. Alexander, to accept the ratification of substantial completion of HVAC replacement at Ethel Scheffner Elementary School. Any discussion?
Just pleased to report that this project came in under budget.
Thank you, Mr. Suffering. No other discussion, please cash your vote. The next item on the agenda is 3.07, the ratification of change order number one, Luling Elementary School Cafeteria Structural Beams Repair and Replacement. In order for the Luling Elementary School Cafeteria Structural Beans Repair/Replacement Project to be accepted as substantially complete, it is necessary to approve a change order rectifying contract days. The engineer recommends adding five days to the original project completion date due to COVID-19-related delays in receiving laminated beams. Acceptance of ratification of change order number one will allow the district to make necessary modifications to the existing contract. This recommendation item was reviewed at the Captain Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, and aligns with Goal D of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Suffering, that we accept the ratification of change order number one for Luling Elementary School Cafeteria Structural Beans Repair/Replacement. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cash your vote. That motion passes unanimously. Item 3.08 is the ratification of substantial completion. Oh, I'm sorry. Ratification of substantial completion of Luling Elementary School Cafeteria Structural Beans Repair and Replacement. The Luling Elementary School Cafeteria Structural Beans Repair/Replacement Project is ready for ratification of acceptance as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on July 30, 2020, with punch list items remaining. The engineer recommends acceptance. Acceptance of the ratification of the Luling Elementary School Cafeteria Structural Beans Repair/Replacement Project as substantially complete will allow the contractor to proceed all closeout documents. This recommendation was discussed with the board president, board vice president, and Captain Improvement's chairperson, and this agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, and is aligned with Goal D of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Over.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mrs. Bernard, that we accept ratification of substantial completion of the Luling Elementary School Cafeteria Structural Beans Repair/Replacement. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cash your vote. That motion passes unanimously. Item number 3.09 is the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Fiscal Year 2020. A statement of total disclosure must be provided to the auditors each time the St. Charles Parish School Board's financial reports are audited. This statement is provided by completion of the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. As a faithful discharge of the trust placed in the school board by the citizens of St. Charles Parish, a complete disclosure of the district's financial operations is mandated. By completing and approving the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, the board unequivocally demonstrates integrity and openness in its reports and records. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, and is aligned with Goal C of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we authorize the superintendent, board president, and chief financial officer to sign audit documents on behalf of the board.
I have a motion by Mr. Suffering, seconded by Mr. Alexander, that we authorize the superintendent, board president, and chief financial officer to sign the audit documents on behalf of the board. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cash your vote. Okay, we need a roll of the board on this one. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item on the agenda is 3.10, the accounts payable for the month of July 2020. Invoices and financial obligations of the board's district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, August 17, 2020, and is aligned with Goal C of the board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of July 2020 in the total amount of $4,732,622.
There's a motion by Mr. Suffering, seconded by Mr. Oakland, that we approve the accounts payable for the month of July 2020 as presented to the board. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cash your vote. That motion passes unanimously. And now we down to our closing items. 4.01, the standing committee reports. Any committee chair would like to make a report of this item, please do so.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, August 17, and we covered three items. Two of those three items came to the full board during this meeting and were approved. Those two items were the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for fiscal year 2020 and accounts payable for the month of July 2020. The other item was Jason DeQueer, a consultant from Baton Rouge, providing information regarding the FEMA disaster assistance funding administered by GOSEP and options available to the board for resolution of a balance due. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Suffering.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, August 17. We had one item on our agenda, and that was a review of the changes to the 2020-2021 Pupil Progression Plan. We approved that earlier this evening, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard.
Mr. President, I would like to address Personnel Committee members on Monday, bringing action to the personnel items, the regular personnel items, the job descriptions, and an extensive report on the demographics among teachers in the St. Charles Parish Public School District. I want to commend the Personnel Department and the staff on the excellent report that they presented. The report did not only cover what the demographics look like, but the report covered an action plan to address what was considered to be discrepancies among the demographic issues found. So I want to thank them for that, and that concludes my report.
Mr. President, the Insurance and Risk Management Insurance Committee also met Monday. We had a review of our health insurance claims reports to see where our claims were falling for the last year's policy and what the outlook looks like for the current year policy. We're basically the same as we have been all year. Doesn't look great, but it could be worse, could always be worse. We still don't understand how the COVID-19 claims are going to fall and have play in the next year's policy. So we still working on that. We will have a meeting hopefully in October to discuss how the claims look based off of all the claims made by the COVID-19 pandemic. So we had that, and then we also discussed the flood insurance that was approved tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud and Mr. Smith. It's now time for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before getting on to the report, I'd like to recognize one of our newly appointed members of our staff, Mr. Josh Martin, who's newly appointed to the coordinator of Gifted Talents in the Arts. We appreciate him being here, and we look forward to his leadership in that new position. Thank you. Parents, if you're sending your child to school, please ensure you take their temperature daily before leaving them to our care. If your child is sick or experiencing any symptoms of sickness, please keep him or her home. This will help us keep a safe environment for all students and minimize additional impacts on our schools. Also, please ensure your child bring their face covering, as is required to be worn throughout the school day and on their bus. Although we have taken and continue to take very proactive safety and health measures to mitigate potential spread and exposure of COVID-19 virus, we recognize that the virus is still active in our community, state, and country. As expected and planned for, we have students and employees reporting confirmed positive cases. This will continue as we operate schools during a pandemic. We communicate daily with the Louisiana Department of Health, follow their guidance, and implement protocols established as outlined in our Family Reopening Guide. Please note that the safety of our employees and students is paramount, and any decision relative to school and/or classroom closures will be made in collaboration with public health officials. In the unfortunate event where we may close a school or classroom temporarily or for an extended period of time, we will notify you via phone call, email, and text. Each school is prepared to provide continued learning for students in the event of a closure through the use of district-provided technology devices. With the restrictions currently placed on buses, new tiers, limitations with staffing, and additional responsibilities placed on our bus operators, who are our heroes, our transportation department is working hard to make improvements to bus routes, pick up and drop off times. As a friendly reminder, bus notes and changes can't be accepted at this time due to new COVID-19 protocols. We appreciate We appreciate your continued patience and understanding as we adjust and transition into these new protocols. After many months of preparation and anticipation, we successfully and safely reopen schools this month for our students and families, both virtually and in person. While there are noticeable changes, our core business of teaching and learning triumphantly returned across our schools in virtual environments. The Public Information Department was able to capture some of the special moments from the first days of school. Let's take a look at this year's video.
We are extremely excited to welcome you back to the new school year, but now you have become familiar with a totally new educational experience. We fully understand your apprehension and concern, but rest assured, we have taken every precaution possible to make sure you have a safe and secure school environment. Your health and safety are our first priority. We ask you and your parents' patience and understanding as we work together to provide you a world-class education, whether it be in person or through a virtual learning model. Our mission is still focused on providing you high-quality educational opportunities to become responsible, productive citizens, and enthusiastic lifelong learners. Remember, that education is the key to unlocking the world. It's your passport to freedom. This year, as you develop a passion for learning, may success be yours. Welcome back to school.
Let me take this opportunity to welcome all of our employees, as well as our students, teachers, and administrators, back to a new school year. The opening of the 2020-2021 school year marks a historical moment for the St. Charles Parish Public School District. The pandemic has forced us to open under challenging and difficult circumstances. We will operate an in-school and virtual program of studies. Educators and support personnel have spent many hours training and planning to meet the demands of our students. Thanks to all of you for your dedication and commitment to educating our children and for making St. Charles Parish Public Schools the best that we can be.
Welcome back from an unprecedented break and a not fully normal schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. Feelings run the gamut from excited to nervous to uncertainty, and changes are bound to occur as we move through these uncharted waters. I have a favorite quote from author Vivian Green that I think could help us in this unusual school year, and it goes, "Life isn't about waiting for the storm to pass. It's about learning to dance in the rain." I encourage everyone to become flexible in understanding as we adapt to our current situation and to find the joy in each day. Together, we can make this a great year.
Welcome back to the 2020-21 school year. It's been quite some time since we've been inside these buildings, but I can assure you that all precautions have been taken so that we may enter safely. No matter what your role is, whether it's a teacher, a parent, a student, or anything involved in our school system, I can assure you that the right steps have been taken that we can have a great school year. So, let's go out and let's have a strong start.
The start of this school year looks quite different from any in the past, but we are optimistic about our strong start to a new school year. The collaborative efforts of all involved in the planning process have been nothing short of incredible. Everyone is working towards the same goal, and this gives us a reason to be enthusiastic and hopeful. The circumstances may be different, but we are optimistic that our core business of teaching and learning will continue and thrive. It is our hope that at the end of the school year, you will be able to say, "This was the best school year ever." Welcome back.
We are excited to welcome our students and employees back to campuses and embrace the opportunity to reimagine services, increase levels of support, and prepare our students for success in a never-changing world. Despite the uncertainty surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic, we are certain that our core business of teaching and learning will continue in whatever situation we may face.
Thank you. A special shout-out to Mr. Mason, who produced that video, and the Public Information Department for putting that together, and the board members for delivering very strong messages. So, thank you. And I'd like to give a special thank you to the Board for your leadership and support, and to our dedicated, hard-working administrators, teachers, bus operators, child nutrition staff, custodians, maintenance personnel, school staff, and all employees for a strong start to the 2020-2021 school year, and to our families. Thank you. We appreciate your continued patience and understanding as we continue to implement many new protocols, routines, and practices needed to operate during this pandemic. I am so proud of the way our students, our employees, parents, and community have come together to make welcoming our students back to campus and virtually a reality. We know everything didn't go according to plan, and we continue to navigate through daily challenges, but we promise to endure and turn those challenges into opportunities together for our students. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Orellin. I'd like to get someone to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Oakland, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. And thank everyone for coming tonight.